Jordan, you good? All right. Call to order for the Los Alamos City Council Meeting of Monday, April 19th. The time is 6:07 PM. Madam Clerk, would you like to take role?
Mayor Turco.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Bates.
Here.
Councilmember Dobie.
Here.
Councilmember Nefolda.
Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink will now lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Please throw me in, leading the flag, ready to go. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands, one nation under our own command. The Lord, I thank you for this evening. I will pray for all of our first responders and those in law enforcement and our military personnel. I pray that they would leave with grace and passion and love. I pray for our residents, those that are still rebounding and suffering. Whatever they may have gone through during COVID, I think that they would find strength and peace as we all get to this room together. And I pray for those in a fort, that we would utilize wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and discernment as we make decisions that are not only in our own best interest, but in the best interest of those that we have been given a charge of. I thank you in advance for all of the warnings and the things that will be done on every path. Jesus, amen.
Thank you, Tanya. Next, we will have a presentation by Sergeant Jose Ramos discussing the California Job Challenge. Welcome, Sergeant Ramos.
Mayor and City Council, I'm Sergeant Ramos. I work at California Job Challenge. We're a new academy here at the Joint Force Training Base. We've been around, going on two years. We're on our fourth class. And I know you guys know about Sumber's. So I worked there as well. I did a little bit of outreach. I did a little bit of everything there. But California Job Challenge is new. And a lot of the cities in Northern Orange County are not familiar with us. So little by little, with this COVID situation kind of subsiding, we want to get the word out there. So I'm here to present us to you. And here we go. So mission statement, provide youth challenge program graduates with post-secondary career education, CTE, training, leading to service industry certifications, college credits, and resulting in job placements. Basic eligibility, youth challenge graduate. So as you know, Sumber's is a youth challenge academy. We also have two more of those academies in the state. Our oldest sister, which is in San Luis Obispo, they've been there since 1998. Our newest sister is in Lathrop, California, which is about 45 minutes out of Sacramento. And they've been there since 2016. And of course, Sumber's has been here since 2008. So our graduates from these academies have to be 16 to 20 years of age, high school diploma or equivalent. If no diploma, we have a high school dual enrollment program that they can attend. We do have, they have to have 50 credits or below in order to qualify for a dual enrollment. Because with college work, it'll be too much if it's more than 50. Automotive technology is one of our favorite subjects. It's very, very popular with kids. Six classes, leading to ASE, A5 and A6 Industry Standard Certificate. And A5 is for brakes. A6 is for electrical. They get a college certification of accomplishment and college credit. So if they want to continue with their education, they can transfer those credits on if they want to get an AA degree. And we encourage them to continue their education. Some of these students of ours are first-time college students. Some of their parents, these are their very first students. We have a lot of kids from central California, and there's a lot of agriculture there. And some of our kids, they work in those fields, and we want to get them out of there. We want them starting on a good job. And that's our core, one of our core things is to get them out of there and give them a good job. This is cyber networking. This is also a very popular pathway. And our students design, build, secure test networks and IT infrastructures to learn hands-on skills, employment. Our students are also prepared for a variety of CompTIA classes, Cisco, Microsoft, Linux certifications to start your career, and strong programs. So our kids, if you notice here, here's a gentleman by the name of Torres. He was our Class 1 graduate. He is working now for a company by the name of, not NSYNC, but Sync. And they're in Irvine. Right now, he's in charge of Vice President of Development. So he's done very, very well for himself. And he's told me, Sergeant Ramos, one day I'm going to be hiring our kids from California Job Challenge. So some of the certifications they can get is A+, Software and Hardware, Networking Plus, Linux, Security, MT Windows, and Operating Systems. Next is the construction trade. With the construction trade, our kids are able to apply for unions and also interview at unions. We have a cooperation with Orange County and LA County Union Council. So our kids are able to do that. If you can look at the slide, you'll see some of the things that they're able to do. But the exciting thing about this is they can come in and be apprentices. Depending on the union they want to join, they could be making some really good money. And after all, this is what we want them to do, is be successful as citizens of society. Welding technology, we're on our third class coming up for Class 5. And this has been a very, very popular pathway. So they'll learn Intro to Welding, Intro to Shield Metal Arc Welding, Welding Arc, Blueprint Reading for Metal Fabrication. They'll get a Long Beach certification on completion, welding certifications, arc welding, structural certifications. And they may, if they're good enough, to set in for the LA Structural License. But with that, they have to continue their education, get an AA degree. We have several students from last class attending those classes in the evenings. The gentleman you see on the right-hand side, by the name of Perez, he is one of those gentlemen who is attending Long Beach Community College as we speak. We have a Certified Nurses Assistant, CNA. We prepare students to work in a healthcare field, facility, or related home healthcare field. A CNA or CHHA, primary job is offer basic care to patients and assist with active activities of daily living. So again, they're able to get a certification. Today, I got a text from one of our past students who just left us. He received a certification from the State of California. But he's well in his way in becoming a CNA and working. So it's a good thing for us. Again, I said, if they didn't have a diploma, they can come still to the academy. They just have to be 50 credits or below. I think right now, we have about 20 kids who are going to receive their diploma. And we have partnered with the Orange County Department of Education. So these are not fake credits. These are real credits. And Orange County Department of Education is helping us with this, just like they do at Sumber's. So they've been very, very helpful to us. All right, how can you help? This is why I'm here, to spread the word. We need jobs for these kids, or we need job leads. So please, if you have any of this that you can pass on to me, we would appreciate it. I can give these leads to our kids, and hopefully, we can get them hired. After all, it's good to jump out. That concludes my presentation. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
That was wonderful question. Does it matter why they don't have, whether it's the credits or you take them?
Well, the Department of Education, Orange County, has said they have to be below 50 because with their college work and high school work, if they're above 50, it'll be too much for them. And they're only with us for five and a half months. So it'll be a lot of work for them. Some of them are overcast, as it is.
No, I understand that. I'm wondering, so are there any reasons that, you know, let's say they spent some time locked up, whether juvenile home or whatever, is there any reason that they won't be accepted besides just not having a certain number of credits?
So our challenge academies, they don't accept someone with felonies. That automatically disqualifies them. Miscreants, depending on the misdemeanor, we can accept them. We've had that issue. So they're okay if they can show that things are good, then yes, they're able to come to our academy. But first of all, they have to be challenge academy graduates.
One more.
One more, yes, ma'am.
I'm assuming that you're already working with the colleges that the children are in, with their career center personnel, also give you leads?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't hear that last one.
That they would also give you leads, the career center?
Yes, ma'am, yes, yes, ma'am. Yes, yes. We've gotten a lot of help from the RMAC meetings. When we go to the RMACs, we've made a lot of partnerships, and that helps us. So any help that we can get with that, it'd be appreciated. Thank you, ma'am.
Sergeant, with your Certified Nursing Assistant Program, do you have any interface with Cypress College? Because, you know, they have an excellent nursing program, and maybe there'd be some transition potential.
We started at Cypress, and for some reason, something happened there, which is above my pay grade. We transferred over to Long Beach. But we are able to tell our kids, hey, if there's a nursing program that you want to attend, please, by all means, we don't just, you know, stay with Long Beach. No, no, no. They're able to apply wherever they may, they want to stay. Also, we have kids from other academies, central and northern California. We do have partnerships that we're able, with a limited capacity to, if they want to relocate, they can live down.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sergeant Ramos.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next, we will have oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward. I don't believe we have anyone in the audience, is that correct?
No one in the audience, and we did not receive any email requests.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to council announcements. Do I have any volunteers to go first? Councilmember Dobie? All right, we'll start with you.
My mic on. Okay, so what I've been up to is, if there's anyone from my HR committee meeting that is listening now, I apologize for missing, there was an email snafu. I will be there next time. And I went to my standing Orange County Mosquito and Vectors Control meeting, and I believe we'll be getting a presentation from them soon. And they have a lot of fun stuff. They have like kits and things that they're taking out to the elementary schools. And it's STEM involved, and it's teaching all the children about tip and toss, and making sure that we're ready for mosquitoes because they're on their way back. Y'all, just get rid of your standing water, make sure that you cover yourself up as much as you can, and also use the insect repellent because the mosquitoes are diabolical. I also attended the Veterans Recognition Night, and that was like really cool because it was completely veteran-centered. Like, they didn't even know I was in the room, and I loved it. I didn't have to go up, I didn't have to tell them who I was. I got to sit in the back and just eat my snacks in peace. It was wonderful. They presented everyone with these beautiful handmade quilts. And there were so many veterans in the room, and you could just see the pride that they were swelling with when people called their names and they got to go up front, and they got to do a dance, and it was absolutely fantastic. And then I went to our Spring Carnival drive-through. And if I could just brag on our city and our Parks and Recs people, I just, it blows my mind every time I come to anything because it was so well organized. My kids had a blast. They had so much candy, I'm still eating it. It was a wonderful time. And I came to the Weekend of Art. And you wouldn't know that it was in this room, but that was also absolutely outstanding, the way they had everybody sorted out, and the art was amazing. I brought my daughter with me, she had a fantastic time. And then the last thing, am I the only one that hadn't seen what they did out here in the finals? Was I the last one? That's cool. It's beautiful. Did we do an open house already? Can I petition for that right now? Y'all have to come and see what we have done in this. And it was our, our own city people. Like, we didn't contract anybody, we didn't have anybody come in. We're fiscally responsible with the dollars that we received, and it is glorious out there. I wanted to stay a while, but, you know, I had to circle through my time. And that, that was.
Thank you, Councilmember Dobie. Councilmember Dobie is speaking of the community center lobby, which city staff did a wonderful job of redoing, essentially. It looks totally new, it looks a lot bigger, and just looks really nice. So, great job, totally agree there. Councilmember Nefolda, would you like to go next?
There we go.
Thank you. Councilmember Bates?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the privilege of hearing the mayor and Representative Alan Lowenthal give a presentation via Zoom about the city and some of the issues we're facing, especially with COVID. Very well done. Probably one of the fun things for me is, even though it was via Zoom, I attended my first Los Alamos Planning Commission meeting in over 30 years. My first engagement with the city was as Planning Commissioner many years ago. And we've got a great commission. I think they're doing a very good job on behalf of the city. Was able to hear a former mayor and a former, actually, a next-door neighbor, Troy Edgar, who I know most of you know, who did a very nice presentation for the chamber on his time handling finances for the Department of Homeland Security. He did a very well documented presentation. Was able to attend the Vector Control District presentation. A real interesting discussion with the League of California Cities was with regard to solid waste organics. And we know that'll be coming up in our contract renewal. Art de Bolt, also from the Planning Commission, joined me on that meeting. Very interesting. We had a session with two Assembly Members, Quick Silva and Lori Davis, both of them talking a lot about what the state is doing in terms of COVID-19. And then lastly, I attended a pretty lengthy discussion with the Revenue Tax Committee. I'd been appointed on behalf of the Orange County Division of the League to the State League Revenue and Taxation Committee. And that's always a very challenging committee to sit on. A lot of issues on how we're handling COVID relief, how we relate to the state and try to keep them from, let's just say, taking our money when it's not appropriate, and paying for any mandates that they put on cities. So it was a very good and well-received meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink?
So I followed Tanya around a lot on some of her city events. The Spring Carnival was fabulous. I got home with so much candy. I'd never seen so much candy in my life, they're just throwing it in my car. There also had, I think one of the schools had a fundraiser where you could buy Easter egg hunt in a bag, and they had confetti eggs and everything, so that was just really great. I mean, the kids were excited, everybody was just excited to be outside and a little sense of normalcy there. Also did the Weekend of Art on Friday night. We've got some amazing talent here. We could probably open our own museum of just local artists, 2D, 3D, everything. It was just absolutely amazing. Regarding OCFA, we are extending Thursday night. They passed through Budget and Finance, but on Thursday night, we should be approving an extension of the contract for the Super Tanker. I believe it's for 180 days. Ron, you can tell me if I'm wrong or not, but go ahead and agree with me, and we're good. Yeah, so in that space over at JFDB, it's a great partnership there. So that's going to be for our upcoming fire season, which never really stops anymore. So that was good. We've had a lot of activity firefighter-wise in Apartment Row, and I want to thank Chief Roberts for just keeping me and our city manager abreast because we get the texts and the emails about what's going on and everything. So we've had a little bit of activity there, but it seems to be unhandled, nothing major, no major catastrophes or anything like that. And I think that might be enough.
Thank you. I attended the Orange County Sanitation District Monthly Meeting, Administrative Committee Meetings for that same organization as well. I attended the Los Alamos Weekend of Art. I'm not going to say anything about what a great job Recreation did because their heads are getting big. All they hear is praise from us. It's just getting, getting to be too much. I had the difficult task of awarding a prize, and, you know, there were so many good entries. I was asking, trying to get other people to help me pick, but they were trying to force me to do that myself. But entries were incredible, and again, it was a really nice event. As Councilmember Bates mentioned, I co-hosted along with Cypress Mayor John Pete in the West Orange County Cities Town Hall with our Congressman Alan Lowenthal. It was a good opportunity to hear some of the things going on on the federal level. Most of the discussion was regarding COVID-19, no surprise there. And I think the video of the Town Hall and all the information that the Congressman gave is available online. This Wednesday, the same organization, West Orange County Cities, will be hosting another Town Hall, which I will be co-hosting with California State Assembly Member Sharon Quirk Silva. And I think our website has information for anyone who's interested in that, on how to participate. I also participated in our weekly Mayor's Calls, although they're bi-weekly now, calls with the county, Dr. Clayton Chow and Frank Kim, the county CEO, regarding COVID-19 progression, statistics, and the vaccine effort. Orange County, for anyone who's following the news, you know that Orange County's making really good progress. There's hope that we're going to move again into a less restrictive tier. Vaccines are now open to everyone, the stats are very favorable. I read that California may have the lowest positivity rate of any state in the US right now. And approximately 50% of adults in California have had at least one shot of the vaccine, so it's very good news. Again, everyone 16 and up is eligible. And obviously, you know, this is something that the Orange County Health Director talks about every week, about the importance of getting as many people vaccinated as possible. The idea is enough people get vaccinated, the virus stops spreading, and most importantly, the virus stops mutating. Now, it's not an issue that's only in California. Obviously, other places have to get vaccinated as well because mutations there can travel here, and it's possible future mutations may be, you know, the vaccines may not be as effective against future mutations. So currently, the current vaccines that we have, Pfizer and Moderna, are 100% effective so far at preventing severe hospitalizations and death. That's incredible. So I'd encourage anyone who can to get vaccinated when you can. In some sad news for our city, very sad news for our city, on Tuesday, April, March 16th, former two-time mayor and city council member Ken Carl Parker passed away at Long Beach Memorial Hospital. Mr. Parker was 65. He lived his entire city, entire life in the city of Los Alamos. He is survived by his wife, Kim Parker, of 35 years, and their two children, Sean and AJ. Ken was elected, I know some folks here knew Ken. He was elected to be a member of the City Council of Los Alamos in 2004. He served as Mayor Pro Tem in 2007, and he served as mayor in 2005 and 2008. He also represented the city on a variety of boards and agencies, including Vector Control, Sanitation District, Fire Authority, West Cities Police Communication Center, Los Alamos Unified School District, and City Working Group, the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, the Los Alamos Rossmore Community Services District Ad-Hoc Committee, the Los Alamos Joint Forces Training Base Ad-Hoc Committee, the National League of Cities, West Orange County Cities Association Annexation Committee, Growth Management Area Group Number Two, on and on. Obviously, Ken was very involved in our community. And in addition to being on the City Council and serving as mayor two times, he was a tennis coach at Los Alamos High School, and he went on to open his own accounting firm right here in Los Alamos. He loved his community, and his family conveyed to us that it was an honor for Ken to serve the city of Los Alamos. So on behalf of the city and the city council, I'd like to express our condolences to Ken's family and our thanks for his many successful years of dedicated service to the city, the high school, and the community. With that, I will pass it to City Manager Simmons for his report.
I've got the green lights. I think I'm on. Anyways, thank you, I'm the City Manager Simmons. I, it's kind of difficult. It's one of these things where I sent out an email to the city manager and the council via the city manager, as well as to my own department, that it's kind of more of a save-the-date, if you will, than an official resignation. But I think after a long separation from not being at work and dealing with some of the topics that we're talking about with COVID and such, it kind of refocused me on thinking about what was the future here for me. And I thought to myself that, you know, I'm going to be coming up on 30 years, May 30th. And that'd be a good time, you know, sometime after that, to maybe look at retiring. And so I chose June 4th as my retirement date. There'll be some official goodbyes that I'm going to be doing, but afterwards. We've talked about the process of putting in a new chief. I know it's one of the biggest decisions of the city, personnel decisions that the city manager has to make. And I would like to, in some way, maybe be a part of helping to make sure and ensure that the community of Los Alamos gets the kind of leadership at that level with the police department that they deserve. I can tell you that what I didn't think that I deserved, and what I got was a tremendous amount of support from the mayor, this council, previous council members, and the city manager, and all of the staff that are here tonight, has been tremendous throughout the five years that I've been here. And I just want to say thank you to them all. I've really grown and have learned a lot, even after doing this job for 10 years. The best of those 10 years were spent here, you know, the last five. So I just want to say thank you for that. Thank you for the opportunity just to say, just announce it, get it out there in the open. It feels strange. I told the city manager, I've never quit anything that I can think of. And he says, well, you're not quitting, you're retiring. And I said, no, I get that, but it just feels strange, you know, that I'll be saying goodbye. But I'll be around for a little while longer afterwards, hopefully, and be able to be part of that process. So when it's all said and done, we get closer to that time when I physically separate, you better believe that I'm going to throw some kind of party, and everyone in this room is going to be invited to it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, Chief, for your service to the city, to the community, and congratulations on a well-deserved retirement. I do feel for your wife, she's going to have you at home all the time now. She's probably going to tell you to unretire at some point, but congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, may we ask the City Manager a question?
Yes, I was going to as well, but you go first.
Okay, thank you. This may be coming from Councilmember Dolby and myself. We recently have gotten inputs from members in our district with concerns, and I'll just speak to mine. Apparently, the noise at the high school is getting pretty loud, and living right next door to the high school in Greenbrook, I can attest to that. And we're getting a complaint from somebody that works right along Finley, just on the other side of the flood control channel there. And I was hoping that the City Manager might mention that to the superintendent and see if there's any way that, at least during parts of the day, we can kind of tone down the band and the music a little, even though I know a lot's going on on campus right now. But apparently, that is a concern of some of the residents just adjacent to the high school on the north side.
City Manager Simmons, do you have any information on the COVID Relief Act, some Okay, thank you. And then, last question is on the city budget process. Where are we on that process?
Yes, sir. I'm happy to report, actually, that we are actually right on schedule with our budget. We will be scheduling a Budget Standing Committee meeting for the beginning of May before bringing the budget presentation to the entire council. Obviously, this is a new paradigm that we are facing now with also COVID, but also the passage of Measure Y. So we are, I will say, sharpening our pencils and checking all of our numbers twice, and we anticipate that we will be in line for a June adoption.
Okay, thank you. But next, we'll move on to the warrants. Does anyone have any questions about the warrants?
Just two quick questions on page six, if we might. Mr. City Manager, could you tell us about the night leadership solutions there on page six? It has to do with Recreation Administration, what's involved there?
Yes, sir. And I'll ask our Director to step in if I miss anything. But one of the things that our Recreation Department also does incredibly well, aside from the events, is preparing their staff for customer interactions and essentially growing their staff and making them think about new opportunities and how they can actually serve their customers better. This leadership function is part of their in-service. It is a paid speaker that comes to talk about those types of issues and trying to actually look for ways to actually gain just that little bit of extra customer service that we can extend to our residents.
Thank you. The second question, Mr. Mayor, on page 10. If you notice the charges there for Will Dan, and you come down, there's one fairly large charge there for $32,700. Could you give us a little bit of background on why it's so large, that particular charge?
Yes, sir. Forgive me, I'm just looking for it real quickly. I want to make sure that I have the correct one. So the charges for Will Dan, there's two charges, the $15,000 and the $32,000.
Right.
So those actually are for two rather large projects. The $15,000 is from November, which was related to a Golden State Water project, and then the large project of $32,000 in December was for a nighttime gas company project. We actually had inspectors out there every single night, and obviously, that does cost a significant amount of money, but it is imperative to ensure that we are getting the work done the right way. And so, but those charges are in line with the normal contract scope of Will Dan.
Was that money recovered from the gas company, do you know?
Yes. So actually, I was going to make a note that some of the encroachment permits and everything are approximately $50,000, and that was covered.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions about the warrants? Otherwise, anyone have a motion?
I'll have it.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrand, seconded by Mayor Turco. Roll call. Mayor Turco?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolby?
Aye.
Councilmember Nofolden?
Aye.
Okay, next, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Councilmember Bates, I know you're going to pull something. I can see you looking this way.
Mr. Mayor, I'll try to make, most of them are just quick questions, but I'd like to just briefly pull D, E, G, H, and I. Okay, we'll make the questions quick, I promise.
All right. Why don't we hold off? After the questions, we'll try to move everything together, if that's okay.
So on D, the Act of Transportation Plan, thanks staff for updating, everything looks good. My only question on that was, if you looked at the transit information and what we had received with some of the bus schedules and maybe changes in the bus schedules, I wonder if any of that needs to be updated before we finalize the plan?
It's an excellent question, Councilmember. Yes, we have looked at the information that Orange County Transit Authority is looking to change some of their schedules. However, we have received word from their staff that Los Alamos will not be impacted by those changes. A full report will be available on the 21st for us to confirm that, but we've confirmed that through two different sources at this point.
Thank you. Going to E, if we might, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, of course.
On the program effectiveness assessment, I know that some of the sections where we would ordinarily want details aren't filled in. Are we waiting for the discussion in order to move that forward or proposals from the consultant? How will that work?
So with regards to this, what we are trying to do is, we're actually going to be putting this item back in front of the awarding body so that they can actually award or acknowledge that, yes, there is funding available, and yes, we will be willing to give it to the city of Los Alamos. At that time, we will come back to the City Council for approval.
Got it. Okay, on G, Mr. Mayor, this has to do with the catch basin connector pipe screens, and I'm just wondering, for the public's benefit, for all of our benefit, can you explain to us exactly what those are and how they interconnect?
Yes, sir. And actually, I'm going to turn it over to our Deputy City Manager, Ron Noda, to answer that question.
You know, I, thank you, thank you, City Manager Simmons. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I could probably explain it, but I'm going to get the expert in here. So we're going to switch it over to our City Engineer, Chris Kelly.
Aye. Yeah, the difference is, we have...
Right into the mic, please, right into that mic. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
I apologize, I don't hear very well.
Yeah. No, right now, back in 2018, the city put in ARS screens, and you can see those visually on the opening of these, opening, curb-opening catch basins. So now, we're applying for the actual screens that go inside the catch basin. They're called CPS units, connector pipe screens. They cover, they cover the outlet pipe with a screen so that trash and debris doesn't go through the outlet pipe into the next conveyance, like a channel or a bigger storm drain. And then, twice a year, staff or consultant will come out and clean that debris that fills up in the catch basin.
Who's staff?
Right now, we clean the catch basins yearly, so we'll have to increase that once the CPS units are installed.
And this helps us meet our MPDES requirements?
Correct. And it's actually documented in the PEA.
Another cost we might add, where we can thank the state and the federal government for the catch basin, some of this is very helpful in terms of stopping the trash from getting out into the ocean, but again, it's an extra cost that city taxpayers are having to bear. So that's my thought on that one. H fireworks, I think you wanted about. H. So the fireworks, I think this may just be editing, Mr. City Manager, I think that we wanted to say for, that we're doing a two-year for '21 and '22, and then we have the option to extend, not for '22, but for '23, '24, and '25. Is that correct?
You are correct, sir. It was a typo in the staff report.
Thank you. And then the last one on I. Can you go, if you wouldn't mind, a little more detail into the LEAP program, and what is going to be the result of this agreement that's being proposed? And I guess what I would focus on here is, you may need the contingency, but we know with the contingency that the consultant sees in the staff report, that's almost like increase the amount to that number, correct? And I mean, I think we'd agree with that. So then my question becomes, if that in fact does happen, the two proposals are very close to being comparable, so I guess I'd like to hear the rationale, in essence, for Terranova versus Will Dan. And both are good companies. I'm not arguing. I'd just like to hear what the thinking was, since both of these proposals are very close.
Yes, sir, and they are very close. The thinking with regards to the contingency is based on, this will be the first time that the city in eight years is going to implement a new housing element, which is the purpose of the contract. Obviously, the housing or the RENA numbers that were assigned to the city were 767 new units. Obviously, that is a large amount of new houses, especially for a city of our size. Given the fact that this is obviously a very charged issue, it can change the makeup of certain neighborhoods, we wanted to ensure that we provided ample funding to be able to do enough community outreach. I do completely grade your premise with regards to if there is more money, if the consultant knows there's more money, that they will go after it. There is a hard line here that any new money that has to be spent will need to be approved by myself, and will be only done in the event that we feel that we have not reached enough people in order to make sure that enough people are informed of what's going on.
Does anyone else wish to pull an item?
I had one question on what we were just talking about, on this assessment for the housing. Do we have the school district involved? Because that's also going to impact the makeup of the schools as well.
And a lot of our outreach is going to be based upon the idea of school populations, and so, yes, the school district will be involved.
Okay, because I know when the apartments go online, that could be a school itself.
You are correct.
So, okay, great, because I know that they can change their numbers on the inter-district transfers if we can optimize residents, but there's a limit to that as well.
There is going to be a significant amount of moving pieces that go into this study, and which is, I guess, belies the importance of getting this project up and running, and then also ensuring that everybody knows about it. So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll pull quickly, item 10B. City Manager, if you could just give a quick report on this, this is the Award of Contract for Website Redesign.
Of course. So, Mr. Mayor and Council, our city website is, I believe, it is a good website. However, there is a significant lack of functionality with it. It just simply does not provide the certain uses that I think a modern consumer expects when they come to a website. If I can go onto DoorDash and it can tell me the time between when I order my food and when it shows up at my house, we should be able, at a city, be able to produce a website that can track requests for service, that can show where exactly your request is in the queue. It allows us to actually provide maps and information to our citizens, and I think a usable format. Our city website right now is not that. It is a, something that we have put together largely in-house. We're holding it together with duct tape and baling wire, and simply just does not have the functionality that I think of what our residents deserve at this point. And so, staff has put together a proposal to actually upgrade that website in order to make it have those functions, and then also to allow us to do more promotion of our city events and such on it. And so, it's a single, probably, most-used tool of our residents in terms of their interaction with the city, and it's our outward-facing access point for them. And I just want to provide the City Council with an option to take a look at continuing to elevate our residents' experience.
Thank you, City Manager. Coincidentally, I've received a couple of requests from residents recently asking for this type of website and functionality and feedback, so I think the timing is good. Thank you for providing that report, so our residents are aware that changes and updates are coming soon. Well, I think it looks like within the next few months, but relatively soon. Thank you for that. So with that, do we have a motion to move the consent calendar?
So moved with the editing change there on that one item.
Am I doing this? I'm doing this, all right. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, next, we have a public hearing on item 11A, the fiscal year 2021 to 2022 Master Fee Schedule Update.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, I'm going to turn it over to our Finance Director to give this presentation. I will state, just from the onset, that the policy that this council and past councils have enacted, where there is a constant review of cost recovery and the fee structure, is a good one. And if I can provide an example, there are a number of cities up there who continue to push this type of practice off for multiple years. The problem with doing that is that when you get to year five, year six, all of a sudden, you're having to increase fees substantially, which is problematic for not only developers out there in the world who are trying to plan on what exactly their business is going to look like, businesses and towns, but also our residents who are looking to do just simple patio installments or to change out windows and such. And so, by continuing to look at this, I think that it's a good practice. I will say that going forward, this will be the last year that we do just an automatic CPI increase if the council chooses to approve it. We will be going out to bid to actually review our, because obviously, our internal structure has changed, and so therefore, the costs have changed along with that. And so, we want to make sure that we're providing an accurate picture out there to our residents as to the cost of the different services that we provide. Great?
Yes, thank you, City Manager Simmons. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is something that we do annually in conjunction with the budget process. This was properly noticed as well. According to best practices of the Government Finance Officers Association and the National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting, the cost for services should be reviewed and updated periodically. Some situations are appropriate to set fees less than the full cost, and examples are some of these other recreation programs. The last study was conducted in 2017 by NBS and adopted by Council July 31, 2017, and at that point, they recommended that the city do annual adjustments by CPI, which we have done. The current CPI reflects a 1% increase. This is from the period March of 2020 to February of 2021. Bureau of Labor Statistics, the CPI for L.A. and the greater Orange County areas. Attached schedule reflects the proposed changes as highlighted. Attached schedule reflects the proposed changes as highlighted. In some cases, there's no change due, due to rounding to the nearest dollar because the percentage increase was so small. The estimated increase in revenue from the CPI is approximately 7,500. I think there was an error in the staff report, but the correct amount is 7,500. And as Mr. City Manager Simmons mentioned, that staff is recommending that the city issue an RFP to conduct a new cost recovery study with next year's budget. This is to make sure that the adequacy of cost recovery is in place. We're actually, the city's accurately capturing use of the services that are being performed and that we're being competitive with the other surrounding areas and cities. That concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Bates?
Just two comments. The, the first comment is, I hope when we look at this, we're applying the concept of our efficiency. So if in fact we're looking at an area where we could be more efficient, that we're using a more efficient scenario to really peg the price of the service. So that would be one point I would make. I think we're doing that, but I would just try to make sure we focus on that. And then the second thing, and this has to do, I'm going to say, with a more common of common sense approach to fees. And what I mean by this is, and I just recently had an experience with this, so I can share it with you. I was putting a replacement pergola in my backyard. And I was looking, you could buy pergolas, pretty nice one, anything between $2,000 and $8,000. Okay, that's pretty reasonable. But when the price of the permit is between $500 and $600, I just ask myself, how many people, especially if they're buying a $2,000 pergola, want to pay $500 or $600 for a replacement permit? And in fact, I bet there's more than one where we see replacement of pergola patio covers done over weekends when not too many building inspectors are out and about. So I guess my comment would be for those services that a typical resident might do themselves, replacing a fence, putting up a replacement patio cover, fixing a backyard brick area, that maybe just standard-type maintenance, I guess I would say that we need to make sure that the fee is consistent with the expense that the resident is going to pay, even though if we have to send an inspector out there, it may not cover the full cost. But I'd rather have them get a permit, have it on the record of what they've done than just ignore us, do it, do it under the table and, you know, we find out about it later, maybe if one of the laborers doesn't have to like the person who did it. So that would just be my comment there, because as I say, when I saw the cost of that, it seemed to be pretty high considering, I mean, our, our person did a good job, don't get me wrong. It was just the question of how much it cost versus the cost of the pergola. That, that was kind of my issue.
Thank you, Councilmember. And, and yes, I, I agree with that as well. There, we will be looking also in this new year, when we go through the RFP and then also a review of each one of the practices of how we actually go about providing the service, looking at opportunities where we might be able to apply what I'll call a, a Los Alamos standard to all of these things that are going out. So if there is a Los Alamos standard fence and that has three or four options, that we can provide those plans, develop them ourselves, plan check them ourselves, provide them to our residents on our website at no cost, then our residents can take those plans, take them to their contractors and know that they'll be approved and therefore not have to pay as much with regards to the fee for us to actually approve them since they've already been, you know, they've already gone through the approval process. And that'll be something that we would hope to look to add once we have the new website up and running.
Councilmember, Mayor Protam Hasselbrink?
Yeah, just to piggyback on Ron's comments, is there any way also that we can differentiate between a new pergola versus a replacement pergola? And as long as the replacement is the same footprint as the new one, maybe the fees are, are less?
You're exactly right, too. There's, I think there's a lot of opportunity within the current fee structure that once we pull it apart, that we're going to find a lot of opportunity to do exactly what you're saying, that there's a way to make this a little bit simpler for our residents. And then also, it's an efficiency issue for our staff as well. We, we don't have a large staff. If we can have them focus their time on things that are not more important, but as important, then we can actually gain a little bit more economies of scale moving forward.
Right, because I know especially on the replacement, a lot of people would consider that maybe a luxury. And if the permit fee was so high, they'll just Band-Aid together their pergola that could make it unsafe or unattractive or whatever. So, yeah, you got my, you have my point. Thanks.
All set, thank you. Okay, I think we're, we're looking for a motion to adopt the resolution number 2021-06. Anyone?
I have it.
Okay, motion by Councilmember, Mayor Protam Hasselbrink?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Nefolda. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, up next is item 12A for discussion, an urgency ordinance establishing limitations on third-party food delivery fees. City Manager, perhaps, well, it looks like Deputy Assistant City Manager Ron Noda will be giving the presentation, and then I'll make some comments there. If you want, we can have City Manager Simmons do it.
We were going to cut cards to see which one of us could jump in first. So as you're aware, as the third-party delivery platforms have been growing in popularity over the past couple of years, this has been spiked, obviously, due to the pandemic. There's been, I think, a wholesale adoption of the normal, the normalcy of actually having, paying someone to actually bring their, your food to you at your house. So there's been a number of companies, Grubhub, Uber Eats, that have stepped in to fill this void. The issue at hand that's been raised is that these third-party delivery platforms are charging large fees that ultimately can cancel out any benefit that it actually provides to the restaurateur through delivery fees, through user fees, advertising fees, and then also just from changing actually the overall price of the item that's being purchased. There is movement at the state level and in other jurisdictions throughout California to limit these fees on a go-forward basis, and that is the, the essence of the urgency ordinance that is before you today, which would limit the amount of fees that these third parties could actually collect.
That they can charge to restaurants.
Exactly, that they can charge to restaurants. And it is important to note that what, the, the fees that are being charged to the restaurants are being then turned around and handed on to the consumers, which is, I'm sure you have all used these services in the last 10, 12 months, and where you had something that would have cost you $10 maybe a year ago, now can cost you someplace between $15 and $16 simply because of the fees that are being stacked on top of it.
Okay, thank you. And I'll, I'll make some comments first since I'm the one who asked to put this on the agenda. This was brought up during one of the weekly, now bi-weekly mayor's calls that we have. It was brought up by the mayor of Buena Park. Buena Park enacted a similar ordinance, very similar, I believe, almost, almost identical to this ordinance. And the, the mayor there said they, they believed it had been effective. My first reaction when, when hearing about this was, well, this is, this seems like overregulation to me, but I wanted to make sure I, I allowed the city council an opportunity to debate it rather than just deciding on my own that it's something we should not consider. So that, that's the reason I asked to place this on the agenda. This is an issue that our restaurants are dealing with. I know personally, I've heard from restaurants, you know, not, not in my position with the, with the city, but as a customer, where they've told me, you know, I made the mistake of ordering, for example, through the Yelp app, and, and I got to the business to pick up my food, and they said, the Yelp app, Grubhub charges us all these fees, please don't ever use them, just call us directly. And so, it's, it's something that I know is affecting our restaurants. I mean, the other concern is that sometimes these apps are not as transparent as they should be in terms of the fees. And I know that the proposed ordinance seeks to address both the large fees that are being charged, but also the transparency issue as well. Since I asked to have this put on the agenda, I see that the state of California has or is in the process of enacting some legislation that, that also pretty closely mirrors what we have in this proposed ordinance as well. So, you know, I'd be interested in seeing what my colleagues on the council think about this, proposed ordinance. Like I said, I, I really put this on here for discussion. So with that, I'll, I'll pass it along for anyone who has comments or anyone who'd like to, to begin a discussion or debate on this, on this item.
I'll take the chat out of it.
All right, Councilmember Hasselbrink?
So I think, I like the idea of this ordinance, one, because I think it's going to be protecting our small restaurants. We don't have a lot of big chain, oh, I'm sorry, we don't have a lot of big chain restaurants, so it's affecting our little mom-and-pop restaurants that make up the majority of our city. You know, 30% to charge a restaurant, plus they also charge the consumer. I, I just think it's a lot. It's, it's just not necessary and they, you know, obviously they saw an opportunity and you had to get food delivered, so, you know, they, they took what the market, you know, allowed. And now, excuse me, now that cities are getting involved, you know, I just, I like the idea of the ordinance. The only comment that I would have at the end is, I'm not necessarily in favor of having a sunset date, just because I think we've been doing this for 14 months now, we've all changed our behavior. I would have never before COVID have food delivered to my office or my home, and now it's like, well, they can, so why not? I just think that this ordinance is protecting our local non-chain restaurants, because 30% is a huge hit to any restaurant. And I just, I don't want to see our businesses suffer any more than they already have because of a, of a convenience delivery fee that covers way more than the cost of the delivery services.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bates? Anybody else? Councilmember Dobie?
Yes. So my thought on it is, I'm always going to have the perspective of a business owner, right, because I am. So maybe the approach would be, because realistically, we don't have to have someone deliver food to us. That's something that you choose to do. And just like if I order something and I want it to come quicker, I pay an up charge to have something come more swiftly to my house. So I agree with Councilmember Bates, with maybe we allow it to be facilitated on a business level. Like, you know, maybe they can go and they can make their own arrangement with DoorDash or Uber Eats or, I don't have them deliver food to my house because I'm a parent, that's me personally. But if you have them deliver, maybe you go to them directly, like, look, I utilize your delivery services this frequently, so let's put a standard rate in place. 30% is too high for me. And then maybe the business can then go and hire a delivery person, because they also have that option. All of our businesses, as far as my mind works, like you hire some, some high school kids that are able to drive, they need some money in their pocket, pay them, you know, $10, $15 an hour to go and make the delivery. There's options, and I think that we should allow our businesses to figure out how they would like to handle their business before we step in and say, mama fix it for you. Now, if there is something that we as a city need to become involved in, I'm all about that, too. But I think firstly, they need to go and see, can I go and directly correspond with Uber Eats? Because you better believe they're going to be willing to negotiate now with cities and states saying, oh, we're going to get involved and we're going to cut your money. So they might be open to, okay, you know what, 30's a little high. I apologize. Let's reason with each other. That's kind of, because I also want to, I don't ever want to tell anybody, this is what you can charge, because that's your business. I don't want you to come telling me what I can charge. So I always have like a small issue with that as well. So those are just my, about four and a half seconds.
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, sure, thank you. I think I'll just come, kind of piggyback on what Congressman, or Congress, Councilmember Dobie and Bates had said. I'm a little reluctant to get involved, at least at this point. One, not knowing, I don't think I know enough information. And two, I'm a little hesitant, because I think, I'd like to get the private sector to, you know, I think as a business owner myself, I think I would tend to want to be able to make these decisions on my own. If I feel it's profitable to engage the use of these services, I will. And if it's to the point where it's not worth it, another salute. I know where I'm at right now.
Okay, thank you. And just, just curious, I don't know, City Attorney, whether, City Attorney, whether you know what the status of this AB 286, I should have given you a, a heads up on, on this question ahead of time. No worries if, if you're not aware of, of what the status is, but the, the state of California, a couple of Assembly members have proposed amendments to their Assembly Bill that would do exactly what the proposed ordinance here would do, which is, you know, limit to, limit delivery fees to 15%, ensure that any tips that are given by customers go straight to driver and the rest of the things that we're trying to do here in this ordinance. So I don't, I don't know if you're aware of that at all.
Yeah, it's my understanding, it's AB 286, and this was amended in Assembly in March and then re-refered to the Committee on Privacy and Consumer Protection, so it's still moving through the legislative process.
Okay. All right, so, so, I mean, the truth is, the state of California may do what we're contemplating here in any case, although it sounds like there's a lot of hesitation to enact this ordinance in, in any event. So what I would suggest, and I'm open to other ideas, I would suggest we table this for now, see what the ideas, I would suggest we table this for now, see what the state of California is doing, and then decide whether we need to take action later on, see whether the private sector handles this on their own, see whether we hear anything from businesses, because, you know, I have not heard anything from our businesses. Looks like councilmember, or Mayor Protam Hasselbrink may have heard something from businesses, but I have not heard anything on this specific issue or this type of ordinance. I know a lot of other cities have enacted an ordinance like this, San Diego, Long Beach, Los Angeles, Pasadena, Santa Monica, and others. But that would be my suggestion. But council, oh, it wasn't a motion yet, but Mayor Protam Hasselbrink?
No, I just wanted to add, because obviously, I'm going to be on the losing side of supporting this. But, and I'm not so much concerned about what they're charging consumers, consumers will fix that. It's the 30% that they're charging the restaurants. That doesn't always get passed on the consumers, because then the consumers aren't going to buy the food, because now it's too much, it's cheaper to go in person. I just want to make sure that we're protecting our businesses. So, you know, obviously, this doesn't sound like it's going to go anywhere right now. But what I would like to do is ask the city if we could just communicate with our restaurants that we are looking at this, but this, you know, because I don't know if a lot of restaurants owners know that there's an assembly bill, that it's working its way through, and it probably will pass. I just want to let them know that we have our eyes on it. We understand the pain that they're having right now with this, along with all the other things they're trying to do just to make, you know, a little bit of a profit. But we're going to let the state go through it, because it will probably pack them all powerful punch than if we just do it as a city. So, I'm okay with that. You know, I just want to make sure, you know, and in response to councilmember Dobie's comment, you know, it's one thing if McDonald's goes to Uber Eats and starts negotiating. It's a completely different negotiation when Mama's goes to negotiate. They just don't have the same clout.
Something that we can do as a city is we can back up Mama. We can get all of our little restaurants together, and then it's not them by themselves. I'm for that all day. They're going to negotiate with, you want to come to Los Alamos? Look, I sound like a woman. Then you're going to come and deal with all of them. Because if we come together as a, yeah, because you're right, McDonald's do whatever they want, and Jack and the Box, let's go. Forte Tasty, the Forte restaurant right there, Madera's, like all of our very delicious and available, like we got a Jimmy John's stuff, I love that placement. We will have their back on that.
Okay, all right, thank you. With that, I'll make a motion to table the item pending future further discussions. All right, all in favor? The item is tabled, and I think that does it for our meeting, unless anyone else wants to stay later. I think the meeting is adjourned, 7:20. Yeah, I know, I keep looking at the clock. It's clearly...